Welcome you to this town hall meeting. I think there's been a lot of concern about what the EPA health advisory limits that have been published, what they mean, whether they're substantiated and evidence-based or whether, how they will impact the water quality in our city to make sure that the members of the public realize that we have a very, very safe water system and water quality. We test this regularly, and I've been advocating that those test results be posted on our city council website so people can freely look at what those standards are and what our levels are. And we have been very proactive in monitoring our water quality standards. And quite frankly, this new EPA advisory really caught us off guard. I think it caught the entire nation off guard, especially when you look at the previous standards that had been published and we were far ahead of those minimum standards. So our purpose here is to make available our managers and our water quality so that they can address your concerns, answer your questions, clarify things, and make sure that the community understands that our water quality and our water delivery systems have not been materially compromised. And we are reacting as quickly and as rapidly as we're capable of. And I think some of the questions and answers that you'll hear addressed today should give you a lot of assurances that our water quality here in this city is safe and available for everyone to continue its use. So I hope that kind of gives you an idea. I mean, I have my own opinions on this, but I think I'll hold my opinions to allow the experts on our staff to answer those. But I can assure you that, you know, my educational background and my professional experience is such that I am a university-trained biologist with academic minors in chemistry and over 30 years' experience working in medical devices and supplies, including a lot of clinical standards, being exposed to high-level, evidence-based studies. So having the ability to critically look at evidence to be able to justify public policy is something I think I have a lot of experience with, and the ability to look critically at some of these issues that are brought forward to us. So I hope that will assure at least some of the residents that we have leadership here and staff that can really look at these issues critically and be able to answer your questions as completely as possible as this issue kind of develops. So with that said, I think I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director to start off with kind of a short history on how this has developed, what we're working on now. And we just had an impromptu meeting with the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality earlier today to even brief us on more up-to-date information. So what do you say, Mr. Couch? You want to take it away?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Good. I think we should probably start with some introductions. My name's Ashley Couch, and I'm the Public Works Director for the City of Prescott. I've been here about three and a half months, so still fairly new.
Hi, I'm Steve Wolfers. I'm the Utilities Manager for the City of Prescott.
I'm Matt Kline, the Environmental Coordinator in our Public Works Department.
John Heine, I'm the Community Outreach Manager and your Zoom host for the meeting for those of you on Zoom.
We've got some in the audience that are city staff, or we have Councilman Siskia.
And Gwen Rowich.
Gwen is our Deputy Director of Public Works. We have our city attorney here. He's also new.
Our city manager, Michael Lamar.
Mike Lamar. Deputy City Manager Tyler Goodman.
And our Airport Director, Dr. Robin Sabata.
And Amber Fraser, Executive Assistant, the City Manager.
And Deputy City Manager Tyler Goodman, where you already introduced, so thank you.
So the city is well-represented here, and I want to start by saying that I think that, from my perspective, the mayor and city council are taking this very seriously. And we're working as a team collaboratively together on solutions. We share a common goal of making sure that our drinking water in Prescott is safe and reliable, and we want to continue to assure the public that that is the case. If you look at the agenda, the first thing we're going to talk about is an annual water quality report. It's also known as the Consumer Confidence Report. The United States Environmental Protection Agency, or EPA, and the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, or ADQ, require water providers of a certain size, like Prescott, to provide an annual report on the quality of our water. And we actually have copies of this on the table right there. You're welcome to pick one of these up. We publish this annually. It's required that we publish it by July 1st. We're targeting to move that up, get it done as fast as we can. Mayor Good spearheaded an initiative along with some other council members for us to publish our water quality data online, and we do that quarterly, which is when we report it to the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. When we do that, we also post it online. If you go to the city's website and look at the Water Quality page, you'll see this report and other information about water quality, as well as this PFOS issue that we're here to speak about today. But what this shows is that Prescott water is very safe, it's very clean, it's very free from contaminants. There's nothing in here that is in excess of what is known as a maximum contaminant level, or MCL. And so those are regulations that require that the drinking water we provide be under those MCL levels, or maximum contaminant levels, that are established by the EPA and ADQ. Our water has been safe, and it continues to be safe. And this is based on the calendar year 2021, but we continue to test. There's a program called Emerging Contaminants that is sponsored by the Environmental Protection Agency, so a federal program where emerging science is starting to indicate that perhaps certain chemicals may be harmful to human health. And so they start investigating. There's a process that they go through, and then they come up with something known as a Health Advisory Level, which is, or HAL, H-A-L. And if you go back, you know, let's say, you know, seven, eight years ago, this was not on anybody's radar screen. It was not known at the time that these chemicals were potentially in water supplies and potentially harmful to the environment. But as science evolves, as it does, scientists started, environmental scientists started to have some concerns that these chemicals may be harmful. Now, what are PFOS? Well, they're commonly-used chemicals since the 1940s. Your non-stick skillet that you use to cook in, that Teflon is PFOS. If you have rain-resistant clothing with Gore-Tex or something like that, that's also PFOS. Makeup, a lot of cosmetics have PFOS in it. Microwave popcorn bags, PFOS. Firefighting foam is a large source of PFOS. So these are very commonly-used chemicals that have been broadly used since the 1940s. Now, what we've learned over the years is that some of these, or what they call forever chemicals, they don't break down in the environment. And then some break down very, very slowly. They can also bioaccumulate in the environment. And very, more recently, I would say in the past five years, they're starting to become more concerned that these may be harmful to human health. So the Environmental Protection Agency established what's known as this HAL, that I said Health Advisory Level, and it was 70 parts per trillion. Now, let me give you an idea, what 70 parts, let me give you an idea what one part per trillion is. One part per trillion is 3/4 of a teaspoon of water in Watson Lake. So you drive past Watson Lake, you kind of figure how big that lake is and how much water is in there. 3/4 of a teaspoon in that lake is 1 trillionth. That gives you an idea how small that is. Another way to look at it is if you stretched a roll of toilet paper from New York to London 1,000 times, one sheet of toilet paper is 1 trillionth. Okay? So that gives you an idea. It's a very, very, very small number. It's 1 times 10 to the minus 12th. And so that is really small. A lot of zeros behind that 1. And the, in late, well, let me go back. In May of this year, the ADQ went about a program, and so far, they've tested 236 wells throughout Arizona. They're primarily targeting airports, and I'll get to that in a moment. And they had 51 of these 236 that showed that they had PFOS above the new Health Advisory Level. So they sampled it in May, but we didn't get the test results until last Friday. And the test results came back that we had levels as high as 15 parts per trillion for PFOA, which is in the category of chemicals known as PFOS. And we had as high as 12 parts per trillion of PFOS. Now, when these were sampled, those levels would have been below 70 parts per trillion, and nothing would have resulted from it other than we knew that we had low levels, but they're well below 70, which is the threshold for the Health Advisory Level. Now, Health Advisory Levels are recommendations, they're not regulations. EPA is going to go through the regulatory process, there'll be public comment, and eventually they're going to come up with a maximum contaminant level for PFOS, and that will be regulatory. But that's not until 2024 and after an extensive public comment period. So on June 22nd of this year, EPA reduced the Health Advisory Level for PFOS. They reduced it to .004 parts per trillion for PFOA and .02 for PFOS. So that's a dramatic reduction. If you think you're going from 70 down to .004 parts per trillion, or .02 parts per trillion, respectively, that is a major change in the regulation. So they moved the goalposts on us. And as a result, now there's levels as high as 12 and 15 that they found. Can, Gwen, can you put the map up, please, for me? They sampled three wells near our airport, wells 2, 3, and 5, which you can see up there on the screen. They had sampled wells 2 and 3 back in 2018, and they were not detected. The PFOS were not detected at that time. Well 5 did not exist back in 2018, so therefore it wasn't sampled. So this time, they sampled wells 2, 3, and 5, and well 2 showed up below detection threshold, whereas well 3 and well 5 showed up above the detection threshold and above these Health Advisory Levels of .004 and .02 for PFOA and PFOS, respectively. Now, how much is .004 parts per trillion? It is not even 3/10ths of a drop in Watson Lake. Think about that. Not even 3/10ths of a drop in Watson Lake. That's .004 parts per trillion. My professional opinion is that that is unrealistic. It's going to cost throughout the country if they were to regulate this as a maximum contaminant level. You're talking hundreds of billions of dollars, maybe even over trillion dollars, for water systems throughout the United States to bring into compliance with a threshold that's that low. ADQ, I asked that very question of ADQ in our meeting this morning. Where do you think this is headed? That's a very, very high bar. And the lady that's expert in this from ADQ thinks that the, when all is said and done in a couple of years, the MCL is probably going to be in the single digits, so 1 to 10 range. So if we're at 12 to 15 for the highest levels that we found in the wells, then you can see we've got a little bit of work to do to bring it down to that single digits. But as of right now, those Health Advisory Levels are much lower. When we got notice on Friday afternoon, which is when the test results came back from the samples that were taken in May, and we saw that we had levels above the Health Advisory Level in our water in wells 3 and 5, in about an hour and 15 minutes, we shut those wells down. We just said, okay, we're going to be proactive, we're going to deal with this seriously, and we shut them down as soon as we could get out there and shut them down. And all of that water was out of our water system in less than 24 hours, just so you know. So as of that moment, the drinking water is safe. It's, we've shut down the wells that had these elevated levels of PFOS above the Health Advisory Level. Now, we think we're being proactive, we think we're being very careful to make sure that our water is safe, and we told ADQ this, and ADQ is very happy, very happy with the City of Prescott for our very proactive approach in handling this situation by shutting down those wells right away. We have eight potable water supply wells in Prescott, and we have five up in the Chino Valley area, and then we have three in the airport area. So the one that tested below, or is not detected in well 2, that continues to operate, but 3 and 5 we took online. That's one of the values of having some redundancy in your water system. It's very important that we keep water flowing for quality of life issues and business interests in Prescott, and that's why you have this redundancy. We can take a couple of wells offline and still not skip a beat. We're still providing quality water to Prescott residents. So what are we planning to do about this going forward? We eventually want to bring these wells back online, but our plan is not to bring them back online until we have a design and a plan in place and constructed where we will use filtration media to remove the PFOS from the water before we send it down the water delivery system to customers throughout the city. Now, there are two ways to do this. One is ion exchange with a resin, and then one is granular activated carbon made from coconuts. Strangely enough, these are small particles. The ion exchange resin is a little bit higher capital startup cost, a little bit lower maintenance cost. They found a much larger contaminant plume in Tucson, and they're using the ion exchange technique there to clean up Tucson's groundwater plume. They pump it, they treat it, run it through this resin, do the ion exchange, and then they test the water. It's coming out that they're removing all the PFOS, and then they discharge it into a local wash. Their plans for using injection wells to inject it back into the aquifer. Now, we don't know which method we're going to use. There's also at our disposal dilution. We're going to, ADQ's going to test our wells in Chino Valley. They're going to take a sample in about a week. In about six to eight weeks is how long it takes a lab. They're very specialized labs that we have to send this to that can detect such low levels of contaminants. And the best labs are not even in Arizona. You have to send them out of state. Takes about six to eight weeks, then you get the results back. And let's say that the Chino wells are free of PFOS detection, or they're below the Health Advisory Levels, then we could use that water without contamination and dilute the water out of the wells 3 and 5 that are contaminated slightly with these PFOS. We can dilute that and get hopefully under the Health Advisory Level, and then that's one, that would be the least expensive way, I believe, of addressing this issue long-term. There'd be some capital costs because right now we're not plumbed to do that, and so we would have to work on some capital infrastructure to make that happen. Alternatively, you could use ion exchange, or we could use granular activated carbon, basically run it through a filtration medium. These are absorptive media that take the contaminants out of our water, and then we would send it down the system. Now, we're going to be working with, we're going to be developing some alternatives and cost estimates. We're going to work with some engineering firms that specialize in these removal processes. And then we're going to come back and work study session with the city council, and we're going to present alternatives and cost estimates and pros and cons with each alternative, as well as a staff recommendation for how we feel is the most cost-effective way to bring these wells back online and keep our water under the maximum contaminant level and Health Advisory Levels established by the EPA at that time. And we'll continue to follow the evolving rulemaking for PFOS through EPA and ADQ. ADQ is just going to basically mimic what the EPA does. And we may even provide comments if we feel that the levels are unreasonable. We may provide public comment, and based on science or based on the cost of compliance, we, you know, we have to be pragmatic about this, and it may cost way too much if the Health Advisory Levels remain at .004. We may be providing comments that we don't feel that that's reasonable. We don't know that. We're very early in the process. We found out about this on Friday. We're starting to kick around ideas of, conceptually, how we could deal with this, but we really got to delve into the weeds. It's going to take us a few months to thoroughly vet these alternatives and design them enough, conceptually, that we can apply a cost estimate and come back and talk to the city council with something that actually has some meaning rather than just ideas. And so we want a specific plan. We can do it this way, that way, the other way, and then costs and pros and cons, and then we'll get direction, and then we'll go finish that design, and then go to, and we'll get funding from council. We'll finish the design and then construct these measures to remove the PFOS from the water, and then we can bring those wells back online. I have with me our Utilities Manager, Steve Wolfers, and Matt Kline, who's an environmental specialist. We have some handouts on PFOS in the back if you want to learn more about these chemicals. We have handouts on that back table. Feel free to take one of those. Do you have any comments, Gwen, or Matt, or Steve, anything you'd like to add to what I said already?
No, sir.
Anybody? So with that, we'll entertain questions.
Thanks, Ashley. As the moderator, we, just to let you know, we do have more than 40 people on Zoom as well. So the way we're going to do the question and answer is that we will start with folks in the room. When the mayor calls upon you to come up, you can come up to the microphone there and share your question. We do expect many questions, so we would like you to make sure that you pose your question as a question versus a comment, unless you think it would be helpful in the discussion, just to be respectful of everyone's time. When we're done, for those of you on Zoom, when we're finished with folks in the room, we will go to the webinar, folks. I will ask you on Zoom to raise your virtual hand on Zoom. I see that three of you have already done so. So just raise your hand, and then I will take you, I'll try to take you in the order in which they came up. But again, we're going to start with the mayor calling on folks within the room for question and answer.
So come on up and state your name and your address for the record, and we'll answer your questions to the best of our ability.
My name is John Tanzian, live at 1400 Northridge Drive in Prescott, 20-year resident. Today, we're all taking these exotic medications, and today we have these exotic chemicals that everybody's using. And then recently, they've determined that urine now has samples of Roundup. And I guess my question is, do we sample the water that's going into the recharging system?
Yes, we do. We have, although, we meet all of the regulations associated with what EDQ requires for us to do samples from our recharge.
So does that, does those chemicals show up on any of our reports?
They will not be in that. No, that's for the drinking water. It does not come out for the reclaimed.
Okay. My concern is the water goes into the aquifer eventually. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up, Neil.
Neil Sinclair, 3151 Mountain Lake Drive. First, I want to just commend the city for being as proactive in responses as you apparently have been. It gives some confidence. I have two questions. One is, do we know, do we have any idea what the source of the chemicals is that's in the water? It sounds like it's in the, around the airport in those wells.
So we have reason to believe that firefighting foam may be a contributor. It is used at the airport for training purposes in the past, and it also has been used to put out fires. It's basically for petrochemicals, as I understand it. Not a firefighter. I'm a civil engineer, but speaking to our fire folks, they use it to put out petrochemical fires. And we had a big one over by Yav, by College. What was the name of that facility that caused, Bennett, Bennett caught fire?
Right.
And they were, firefighting foam was used there, there, as well as a few either training exercises or fires at the airport. We have Dr. Sabata here, and if you want to jump in and...
Sure, sure. I can step over here so you could see. Robin Sabata, Airport Director. So the FAA-approved extinguishing agent that is used for aviation fires is called AFF, and that's aqueous film-forming foam. That's a 3% solution. Generally, they don't dispense the agent unless there's an actual fire, but once a year, we do do a test. And historically, the test was done in the area around the fire station. But about two years ago, the aviation community recognized the PFOS situation, and so there was a change in the way that the testing was done, the annual testing. It was dispensed into a limited area last year, and this year, we actually worked with the fire department to retrofit our vehicles for a circulation system to allow the testing to occur without dispensing agent to the environment. So we've been actually kind of working on this for a couple of years.
And if I might add to that, that may not be the only source. These are commonly-used chemicals. And so the fire department keeps hazmat sheets on different industries throughout the community that use hazardous chemicals, and where we have reason to believe that they may be using PFOS in their operations. Our fire department staff are going to go out and speak with the owners and operators of those facilities that use PFOS to make sure that they're not an ongoing source of additional contaminant, contamination of the aquifer. So we're going to be working on that.
What about aviation fuel leakage? Is that possible?
That does not contain PFOS.
That's correct.
Those are hydrocarbons.
Okay. My other question is, what is the health concern about PFOS? Is it a suspected carcinogen, or what is the health concern?
Yes. That's among the health concerns that they have is testicular cancer, liver cancer, there's one other kind, I don't remember what. I don't remember what it is, but there are three kinds of cancer and some other health conditions that they believe they're concerned about. EPA is testing mice. They basically dose them with large doses of PFOS and then they observe what happens. And then they extrapolate that to human beings, which, you know, we're not mice, so, you know, it, obviously, it, I mean, you're not going to test this on humans, obviously. So, so you do lab...
Well, let me jump in here and read the statement from ADQ. Health studies have shown that drinking water with PFOA and PFOS higher than the health advisory levels over a lifetime may increase the risk of cancer, affect the immune system, lower a woman's chance of getting pregnant, and impact children's development. So clearly, this is a projection from some of the recent studies in this area. But again, I'm going to have to look into these health studies to indicate what they really do show and how legitimate some of these new advisory levels really are. I mean, when you look at the fact that there are only four labs in this entire state that can do testing of these products and the sensitivity they have are only 1.6 parts per trillion. So we're supposed to identify point 0004 parts per trillion when there's not a lab in the Southwest even available to test at that level? It just shows you how much of a difficulty it'll be to even get to a point where these levels can be even be tested or detected. So that's why we're hoping that as this information becomes broadly known throughout the country, that the EPA advisory levels will be probably modified to more reasonable standard. I actually brought a article from the Wall Street Journal to the attention of our city manager a couple of weeks ago because I read the Wall Street Journal almost every day. And there was an article in here dated June 16th about this particular standard. And in that article, there was a reference that said industry groups said the agency had failed to wait for a peer review of toxicity assessments to be completed before releasing these standards. The American Chemistry Council criticized the EPA's methodology and said the new health advisory levels will have a sweeping implication for policies at state and federal levels. So you can imagine throughout the United States, the number of water systems and providers being hit with these levels at this point will cause a vast concern about being able to have testing done, where these labs can do the testing, where there's a test lab that can even closely reach these levels, and then the demand on some of these media that are recommended now to be able to absorb some of these PFOSs and PFOAs to be able to take them out of the system completely. It's going to take quite a long time for us to be able to get our arms around what's the best thing to do and how to be able to protect the public to a level that it's legitimately safe.
Did the, did the EPA, when they sent out this new level of information, did they say whether these are a result of preliminary studies or how did they characterize the strength of their concern?
I don't think I can answer that. I don't think anybody else can answer that.
ADQ talked a little bit this morning about following the science and that's how, that's what EPA quoted in their release.
All right. All right, thank you.
Yeah, come on up, Joe.
John Zembrano, 2910 West Chrisview Drive in Prescott. Question would be, have you sampled the wells in Chino Valley? And do we know what's, what those wells contain? Have they been above the detection levels? And second, is there any program to determine whether the wastewater going through the recharge beds is the source or whether it's something like runoff from the airport?
Okay, I'll take the first one. The wells in Chino Valley have not yet been sampled for PFOS. They will be sampled within a week by ADQ. We'll get the results back in six to eight weeks. And if you want to take the recharge question, Steve?
On the recharge side, it has not been investigated if there is a connection between the recharge and the...
Is there a program to do that? I mean, I think it should be, but...
Well, I can't disagree. At this time, we do not have a program to do that. We follow all of the ADQ's recommendations on the recharge.
So the recharge water is tested and it does meet ADQ standards?
Yeah, but they don't require, they don't have standards for those two chemicals.
Not yet.
And I do have some comments. I know you didn't want comments and I'll sit down if you don't, won't indulge me with a few comments, but...
Go ahead.
The health advisory numbers are, what you'd say would be the equivalent of MCLGs, maximum contaminant level goals. If they survive all the review that's going to take place, and I guess the SAB is looking at a final look at it, they have looked at it previously. There are two 800-page documents that describe the, the science behind the two HALs. So if you look at the, if they survive additional review, they would equivalently be the MCLGs. The MCLs by law have to take into account analytical detectability as well as cost benefit. Detectibility, from what I gather, is going to bring it into the range of about four parts per trillion. What cost benefit analysis is anybody's guess. So you're probably going to be looking at something in that range. However, it doesn't mean that the health effects go away. If the, if the HALs are point 004, if the, if the MCLG, which you desire to have basically no effect in accept level, they're going to be really low. So anytime you detect this, it's going to indicate some kind of a problem. The studies, my first glance at them, look like they're pretty solid studies, epidemiological studies. They're described as high-quality studies and there are more than one, there are many different adverse effects that they looked at. And they've come up with reference doses for at least four or five of them. And they all generate pretty low numbers with reduction in immune response to, to vaccines being the ones that we're controlling for the, for the zero point, point 004 and the point 02. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. All right, anybody else in the chamber with a question?
Matt Hansen, 3422 East Suburbs Circle, Prescott. I read an article in today's newspaper, The Courier-Jo, by Joan, Jo Zarnock. I want to know if this is true. He said that the FAA was to stop using forever chemicals in October 2021. Is that true?
No, Dr. Sabata...
Pardon?
I'm going to ask Dr. Sabata to answer that question, please, our airport director.
And also, why, why, if it is true, why hasn't it been enforced? Why, why are they allowing airports to use this? This is for the foam, the firefighting foam.
Sure. So as part of the Defense Reauthorization Act of, I believe it was 2018, there was a decision at that point that they wanted to go ahead and retire these forever chemicals by the fall of 2021. There was testing that was undertaken to see if aviation fires could effectively be fought with other alternatives, and that, that study is still underway. What they did is they came up with a advisory called a CERT alert, or that's a certification alert. And as part of that, what they said is while we're still working out an alternative to AFF, aqueous film-forming foam, we want to make sure that when you're doing testing on airports, that you do it in a manner that you fully contain it. And so there was a grant program as well as other initiatives to get people to retrofit these vehicles so that it is not released and testing is still continued. So that is the current position of the FAA and the Department of Defense is actually leading this. And so there are, they are exploring alternatives at this point, but it has not been set as a line in the sand.
Congress, they said in this statement that Congress gave you airports three years to get this under control, to have a substitute to eliminate these. And apparently, you haven't, much has not been progressed in that, in that realm. So what's the, what's the prospective future of getting a chem, making the process effective in putting out fires without this forever chemical? What's, what's the future analysis of making this happen?
And, and that is what they're doing right now is conducting studies to make sure that it can effectively put out fire and save lives.
Okay, well, you have three years. So what's, what's been the progress? You had three years to do this, you know? That's, you know...
It's true.
That's not very, that's not very effective, is it? It's not, having three years to, you know, we have a lot of chemical engineers out there and other people in the science, you know, science field. I've had college chemistry myself, but what, you know, what's, it doesn't seem like much is being done and then you're kind of just letting, letting it flow. And although this is just one source, you know, of contamination and still, you're still trying to find out what are the, you know, other people are saying, what are the other sources? So in, in the article by Jo, he said that this has been for many, many years, that this knowledge has been known of contamination. My other question is, what is the known effectiveness of reducing these forever chemicals in these two processes that you have, the ion, ion exchange and the carbon filtration? How effective? You say Tucson is using this. And so what, what can we expect in the effectiveness? Can it be reduced to the point 002 and point 004? Has that been, has that happened? What's the low, what's the levels that the ionization in Tucson? What has been reduced to?
It's not detectable. After the ion exchange resin, the water passes through the ion exchange resin and what they're...
So it's completely eliminated, you're saying then?
It's not detectable. Our detection limit is...
Is 1.6?
1.6 to 1.8 parts per trillion.
Okay, but you said that other sources in the United States have the ability to detect lower levels, not in the Southwest. You said in the Southwest, they weren't. What about other, you're, you're, in fact, you are taking the source, the chemical sources to, outside the states, you said, to, to do some testing, right?
Do you know the national threshold for testing?
No.
Is that correct?
The laboratory that, that we have used and ADQ has used has a detection limit of approximately 1.8 parts per trillion. That is...
Is there, is there any sources in the United States that can go below that level of detection?
Not that I'm aware of. The EPA method is, is...
How about in the, in the whole world?
I, I don't have any information.
Well, so the problem is, you can't discern what, you know, what you can detect, you know, that you can even come up with the...
Sometimes that's a problem with the federal government's determination of a number that's not detectable and it's not measurable and they don't know what the cost would be involved to even create it. So I suppose they would, they would have to create a new lab with new sensitivity and then how many water providers throughout the United States would have to get in line to be able to have their sample tested and how long would it take? These are the kinds of questions and impacts that really aren't thought out very well when you have the old saying that I'm from the federal government and I'm here to help. Thank you for your comments.
And let me just remind folks in the audience that one part per trillion is 3/4 of a teaspoon in Watson Lake and point 004 parts per trillion is three, less than 3/10 of a drop in Watson Lake. And just let that, you know, think about that for a moment. Those are mind-bogglingly low numbers.
John, you want to start taking a few calls from the people on Zoom?
Yes, sir, we have three right now. The first in line is Jarrett. Jarrett, I am going to allow you to talk and please unmute your microphone as well. So Jarrett, I see you on. I see that your microphone is muted. If you're still with us, please unmute and go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Please speak up a little. It's a little faint.
First off, let me say thanks for all the information. I actually live in Prescott Valley and I'm on a well. My question is, since you tested three wells around the airport and the levels were only detected in two, maybe my understanding is a little simplistic, but since, my understanding is we all take the water out of the Prescott AMA. Is there a thought as to why the water wasn't detected in all, or the contaminant wasn't detected in all three wells?
They, I don't really, I'm struggling to answer that question. They tested three wells. It was not detected in airport well two. It was detected in airport wells three and five. We are planning to test it in the Chino Valley wells. We have five out there and ADQ is going to test them within a week. We do have a contaminant plume kind of, I would say, in west, northwest, northwest Prescott off of Iron Springs Road. Those are private wells over there and, and they've detected a plume that's, that's significantly higher than what's been detected in the airport wells. These are private wells and, and ADQ is working with those private well owners directly. That's, it's not the source of potable water for city water customers. You know, we're, we're just starting to get our arms around where it is. It's an emerging science. It's emerging contaminant. And we'll be investigating and trying to figure out better, working with ADQ where, where these chemicals may be found and where they're found in drinking water supplies, we'll, we'll treat them and to provide safe drinking water to our residents. And we won't, the plan is not to turn any of those two wells on, wells three and five, until we have measures in place to remove those PFOS from the water or dilute them to acceptable levels.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jarrett. Okay, the next I have, we had a few drop off. I've got Gary Beverley. Gary, I'm going to allow you to talk and just unmute yourself and then we will be able to, we should be able to hear you. And please speak up, our mic or our speaker is a little faint. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I think the city has been very nicely responsive to this issue and I hope you continue the public transparency on this. That's very important. I think the first job here is to find the source of this. It could be the recharge ponds. It could be that the old dump underneath the new jail is leaching water into Granite Creek in Watson Lake. There was tremendous amounts of, of material in Watson Lake that came from the old wastewater treatment plant. It could be coming from the airport, could be coming from various industrial uses in the vicinity of the airport. So you need to find the sources of this and identify those. I have the idea that the sources may be old. The thing is, is that the two wells where the PFAs, PFOAs were found are deep wells. They're screened in the lower volcanic aquifer. So at this, in this area, there's actually two aquifers, an upper alluvial aquifer and there's been the thought that there's been a kind of a fine clay layer separating these two aquifers so that water in the upper aquifer wouldn't penetrate down to the lower. Now, obviously, that's not true. That's an aqua tar, not a, not a barrier. It is true that underneath the city's recharge basins, there's kind of a mound of water. And it's also true that data shows that the water levels in the lower volcanic layer are going down similarly to what they do in Chino Valley. So there's a clear implication, there's a separation there. So if PFOAs are found in the lower layer that's deep, how did they get there? First of all, the two, the two aquifers have to be communicating. But for... But for pollutants that have a surface source to reach down into the lower aquifer, it seems to me that would take some time. And it seems unlikely that a spill in the surface at the airport two years ago is going to show up here already. So I really don't understand what's going on here. There needs to be some, some thorough investigation done on the hydrology and on the sources. And it would lead to defining a plume of contamination underground. And that would be really important information for mitigation of this problem. So I know there's a lot left to learn and a long ways to go, and I'm confident the city will do a good job on it. I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Beverley. I think from the conversations that I heard from ADQ this morning, right now, they are targeting testing based upon the most likely locations. And a lot of those were airports, whether they're civilian or military. So that's where their first initial targeted testing occurred. And then maybe secondarily, other locations that fire departments or fire training facilities were historically using some of this material. And that was maybe a secondary list of targeted areas. So I think this is an emerging concern. And as the tests come back and the verifications are found by ADQ, they'll probably broaden their, their scope of testing locations. But as long as we know that we have the capability of removing these materials from our water supply, then at least the people in, that are utilizing Prescott's water system can be assured that the water they are using is safe to drink and, and use.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we have one more hand raised, virtually. Ann, I believe Ann Friday. Ann, I'm going to allow you to talk now. Please unmute yourself and go ahead.
Good afternoon. This is Ann Friday. I live near Yavapai Hills in Prescott. And thank you for having the town hall. I agree that the city has moved pretty rapidly on this. I do have one request. The city keeps repeating that they monitor the water monthly. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the city does not monitor for the chemicals we're talking about, the PFAS chemicals.
That is accurate. The first time that our wells were tested was in 2018. They tested Wells, Airport Wells Two and Three, and PFOS were not detected. And then we had the most recent round of testing. The samples were taken in May of this year. We got the results back just this past Friday. And an hour and 15 minutes later, we, we shut those wells off. So the latest round of tests showed that Airport Well Two is not detectable. Airport, Airport Wells Three and Five did have PFOS in there, as, with values as high as 12 parts per trillion for PFOS and 15 parts per trillion for PFAS. And when, soon as we found out, we sent staff out to turn those wells off and they were shut down in an hour and 15 minutes. And we will not turn them back on until we have a plan in place to deal with this.
Thank you. I just take exception to the city continuing to say they check monthly when they do not check for the PFAS. Now, there's lots been said about the tiny amount of the chemical, less than a teaspoon or so in the lake. However, the, since 2018, it is unknown how long the levels have been high compared to what I do agree are the new standards for the point oh oh four. The levels are 3,750 times higher than the health advisory, which just went into effect, and 600 times higher than the point oh two health advisory for the PFOS. So who gets the water from the airport wells? Because, you know, having a lot of people been drinking it and it's slow to degrade and builds up in the body and looks like some people could have some health concerns from this. There is a Harvard study that shows that there are worse COVID outcomes for those people with high PFAS levels in their blood. And there is a lab in Phoenix that people can send their tap water to, to get it tested. However, it's kind of expensive. I see it's 250 to $500 per outlet. But would you tell me who receives the water from the airport wells, number three and five, over the past three plus years? And that's my final question. Thank you.
The distribution system is looped, therefore the water is throughout the city. Generally, the airport area and the area towards, and I'm sorry, I'm fairly new to the area, so it's hard for me to describe where it is. But up towards the Prescott Valley border generally is where the water is fed. But again, it's, it's a completely looped system, therefore the water does circulate throughout the city.
And I'll just say that we're in compliance with our ADQ permit. This is an emerging contaminant. It's emerging science. It is not a regular, it is not a regulation. There's not a maximum contaminant level that is regulatory that we must comply with. So we're in compliance with our ADQ permit. We're in compliance with the law. We voluntarily shut these wells down and just because it was recommended that the advisory levels be set at point zero zero four and point zero two for PFAS and, I'm sorry, PFOA and PFOS respectively. So out of an abundance of caution, we shut those wells down. But the monthly testing we do is, we test all the analytes that are required by ADQ. And that's basically a pass through from the EPA. There are how many that we, it's over, over a hundred? It's hundreds of analytes that we send to the lab and that they look at. And we're in compliance with every one that is regulatory in nature. So we're in compliance with our permit. This is emerging science. In 2024, EPA, between now and 2024, they're going to go through a rulemaking process. And in 2024, it'll become a regulation that we have to comply with. And we intend to comply with it, whatever it is at the time. These are advisory levels, the recommendations. And within an hour and 15 minutes, we shut the wells off as soon as it was brought to our attention that they had PFOS in them at detectable levels that were above the, a health advisory level. So it, you know, it could be that we're going to have to start testing for these chemicals as part of our, our monthly suite of analytes that we look at. And if that's the case, then we'll comply with whatever the regulations are at the time. Thanks for your comments.
So Mayor, I see no more comments. Oh, I actually just had a hand go up. Deb Dalasitis. Deb, I'm allowing you to speak. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you very much for doing this. It's really helpful. I'm wondering if you could touch on what your thinking is around keeping the public informed going forward? Are you going to do briefings at council meetings? What's, what's the game plan?
Okay, we, since we found out on Friday afternoon that we had detectable levels of PFOS, we sent out press releases Friday, Monday, Tuesday. And again, so, and there were actually two that went out yesterday. We believe in transparent government. I believe in it. Our city council believes in it. We want to keep the public informed. As there is news to report, we will share it with the public. We will share it with city council. We're not going to hide anything. It's going to be open. It's going to be transparent. As soon as we have news to share, we'll share it.
So I guess my question is specifically, where should we be looking for this information?
We put out news releases. John Heine is our, in charge of putting out press releases. We have social media that we post the news releases on. Presume you can subscribe to those. John, why don't you speak to that?
Yeah, Facebook and Instagram are our main ways. And also, the, the city website will host all of these. Typically, in a situation like this, that's ongoing, we create a page and we place all of the documentation, the news information on them. Right now, the press release can be found on the city's homepage. If you go to the news section and it's sort of in time order, you can go back and look at those press releases. But in a situation that's ongoing like this, we will create a dedicated page and we'll place all the news and any associated documents, including this video. This video link will also reside on Facebook and on our city's YouTube channel, and we'll place it on that page as well.
Right now, we have a water quality page. So if you go to the city of Prescott homepage and you go to water quality, there's a water quality page. And this PFOS information and all water quality information about drinking water is on there. So that's a great place if you want to follow it. It's the city's website. We'll keep that up to date.
Looks like more in-house questions. I don't see any additional popping up on social media or here on Zoom right now.
Well, Mr. Tanzi, if you want to conclude our meeting here with a last question, feel free to come up.
Come on up.
I neglected to ask, does the recharging system have these chemicals being detected in that water?
I can't answer that question because we haven't tested for them. They're not required as, through ADQ to be tested.
And then what is done in the recharging system if you do see toxic chemicals? Do you have any way of treating that?
I can't answer that either because I, I don't know what toxic chemicals might be there. We just use our wastewater treatment facilities. And through you, through that process, that's the way that the different things are removed.
So it, the, before we recharge the water, it goes through the wastewater treatment plant at the water reclamation facility in the airport. And it is tested before we recharge it. And we're in compliance with our ADQ permit. Occasionally, we might have something like excessive turbidity, for example, or nitrates or, or something that's in excess of the permit levels. We're required to notify ADQ within 24 hours. And then we have 30 days to deal with it. We usually deal with it right away. That's to stay in compliance with our permit. So, so the water is tested before we recharge it for everything that's required in the permit. And we report those results to ADQ. And if we have an exceedance, then we notify them as soon as we have an exceedance within 24 hours and we have 30 days to correct it and report on it to ADQ. Typically, you know, we might get a little bit of elevated turbidity. And then we get that under control by changing our processes at the plant. We're always fine toning it. It's, you know, there's a lot of art and science and, and basically just, it's a lot of biological reactions that go on at the wastewater treatment plant. But those are very effective at removing pollutants. And so the water that is recharged is clean and it, it meets our permit requirements. And we, it is tested. So bait, and it's, now, it's not tested for PFOS yet. We're in compliance with our ADQ permit right now.
Okay, thank you.
So one last thing, Mr. Mayor. We have had some comments on Facebook and questions. We did not offer that as a way to interact with this event. So we could, I can suggest to these folks that we can reply on Facebook. I will work with the Public Works Department directly and we can reply to the questions on Facebook, if that's all right with you.
I think that would be appropriate.
Great. We're all set.
All right, so we're going to kind of wrap up this town hall now. I want to thank everyone who took the time to come down to the chambers and participate here, ask questions. For those online, I appreciate their interest as well. It is certainly our intention and the intention of the city to make sure that the ongoing process here is communicated so that we can be as transparent as possible, be proactive as possible, and do everything that we can as we, as this process moves forward to make sure that the users of our water here in the city are assured that it's safe to use. And as an example, I've been focusing on our arsenic levels in the city. We've exceeded the EPA standards, but I felt that we should do more to drive those numbers down as low as possible. And we've, we're now about thirty, 30% below where the EPA says is, is a standard level. But the more that we can assure the public that we have the cleanest, safest water to use, we're going to do that. So as this process develops and any new developments or standards that we see or respond to, we'll post that on the city's website so that the community at large can see what we're working on. And rest assured, we're going to do our very best to provide the safest water available So thank you all for coming. And I think we've concluded our town hall event today. Thank you.